Well, good morning, everyone. I am interim President Teresa Woodruff, and I officially call this meeting to order. Secretary Fletcher will now proceed with the roll call.
Thank you, interim President Woodruff. I'll call the role trustee Byram.
Present.
Trustee Dano.
Here.
Trustee Kanaki Jefferson.
Present.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Scott.
Present.
Trustee Tbay.
Present.
Trustee Vassar.
I'm here.
Interim President McCorm is present.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second was by trustee Tbay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda is approved. Chair Vassar will present the personnel action.
Good morning, and thank you all for joining this special meeting. This is an exciting day for Michigan State University as we begin a new chapter while also continuing the excellence and global impact that our great university has championed. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank interim President Woodruff for her engaged leadership this past year, which touched the lives of so many Spartans. We are grateful for everything you've done for MSU, for your support as we begin this presidential transition. Additionally, I thank Provost Zeitzko, Dean Jackson, G C Quinn, and Dr. Fletcher, who lost sleep and missed meals to get us here to this fantastic Friday. A special thanks to comms for bringing us to this spectacular event today. And I also want to thank my fellow board members. Thank you for your collegiality, your professionalism, and for coming together to make sure that we are here for this crucial agenda item today, appointing the 22nd president of Michigan State University. This moment is the culmination of a thorough and expansive process. And I'd like to thank our exceptional search committee members for their partnership with the board and their service to the university. To recognize them, we have a slide we'd like to share. All of their names are here. Our mission in this presidential search was clear, to find, as the search prospectus specifies, an experienced leader with the intellectual vision, broad worldview, and personal integrity to inspire the university community to new levels of excellence across its locations, colleges, and disciplines. We are confident that Dr. Kevin M. Guskowitz, we have chosen the most qualified candidate to lead Michigan State University forward. Dr. Guskowitz doesn't know it yet, but he has always been a Spartan in spirit. He has consistently communicated values I personally hold dear: equity, integrity, honesty, transformative leadership, accountability, and transparency. In the examples he shared with the board, Dr. Guskowitz described many leadership attributes Spartans called for during our numerous community input sessions. Trustee Dano will share more about why we have chosen the right leader for MSU for this moment. So I'll just share a few examples of his alignment within our community. First, we wanted a leader who would successfully advance the university's teaching, research, and outreach mission. Dr. Guskowitz is a nationally recognized neuroscientist, academic leader, and concussion researcher, who not only continued to teach and conduct research as chancellor, the teaching was really impressive, he did so while leading one of the nation's premier universities and the flagship of the North Carolina system. UNC Chapel Hill's reputation rings out globally, and we are excited to have him lead MSU into this next era of prominence. Second, our community called for a leader with a highly developed understanding of academic values and culture, including shared governance. Dr. Guskowitz brings that acumen, having served with distinction at nearly every level of university life. He's been a faculty member and a member of the Faculty Senate, a department chair and center director, and a dean and a chancellor, and he has he has shown us that he is forever a student who values learning while he leads. Third, our community called for a leader with a genuine commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. To name just a couple of his accomplishments, Dr. Guskowitz appointed a special commission to examine UNC's 230-year history with race and racism, and recommended ways to redress harm and move communities forward in harmony. Before that, he launched the first-ever Faculty Diversity Advisory Committee. Finally, our community wanted a leader with a deep sense of humility and a commitment to service leadership that aligns with values espoused in our land-grant mission. When you look at Dr. Guskowitz's record, and when you spend time with him, you'll find that he's committed to working in trusted partnerships with students, alum, faculty, staff, administrators, and trustees. On that note, the Board of Trustees is deeply committed to working side by side with Dr. Guskowitz in shared governance to propel MSU forward. We have found a leader who will work with the MSU community and the board to propel us into the bright green future of our illustrious institution. Finally, and importantly, I am grateful to trustees Dennis Dano and Brianna Scott, who respectively served as the chair and the vice chair of the Presidential Search Committee. You worked through challenges, ensured diverse representation on the committee, made thoughtful decisions, and listened to the Spartan community. Thank you both, and once more to the entire search committee for securing an outstanding leader for Michigan State University. Go Green!
Go White.
Aye. Hey, thank you Chair Rema Vassar. You know, I first like to thank the Isaacson Miller team, Mindy, Joanna, Debbie, and John, for their patience and expertise to get us to this incredibly exciting place today. I'd like to thank the entire, excuse me, the entire 29-member search committee for their work, their time, their dedication to getting us the absolute best person possible for MSU president. And especially like to thank those search committee members who came in with an open mind and without an agenda to get us to this exciting day today. I want to share my thoughts on why Dr. Kevin Guskowitz is the right leader for Michigan State. As an exceptionally able administrator, he led UNC Chapel Hill to a top-four ranking among public universities by U.S. News and World Report this year, jumping seven places to number 22 in the country overall among public and private institutions. He led the university community through challenges similar to those faced by Michigan State, including broadening in-state tuition, in-state student access by increasing financial support, operating during the COVID-19 pandemic, and comforting the campus following a fatal shooting. He launched a variety of other initiatives, including connecting the university to communities in each of the state's 100 counties, building collaborations to develop university research applications, launching campus-wide diversity climate survey, and establishing a rapidly emerging antiviral drug development initiative. He led the 13th largest research university in total research expenditures. We are confident his experience will help achieve our strategic plan goal of $1 billion in research expenditures by 2030. And before I make the motion, I'd like to recognize my partner in the presidential search, trustee Brianna Scott, who I leaned on, who I depended on, who I used, who I leaned on her expertise on this. Like her to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dano, and thank you Chair Vassar. Once again, I want to thank the search committee for all of their work and the time spent helping us pick MSU's next president. I'm excited Dr. Guskowitz has accepted this role, and we all look forward to working with him. During the search, Dr. Guskowitz stood out to me for very many reasons. Today, I will just share two of those, although I could go on. First, he's an engaged and transparent leader who believes in broad collaboration, shared governance, and working closely with the board. When he was chancellor, for example, he held more than two dozen listening and learning sessions with constituents across campus. He also relaunched annual bus tours around North Carolina with faculty and campus leaders to help connect the university with state residents, legislature, and communities. And I know during this interview that really excited a lot of us. This aligns wonderfully with MSU's strong outreach missions. Second, Dr. Guskowitz is a highly strategic leader. He led, for example, the implementation of UNC's strategic plan, which, like MSU's 2030 strategic plan, describes the university's priorities and goals. Under his leadership, I especially like the emphasis on building an inclusive community together. This experience, and so many others, positions him well to advance MSU's strategic plans, including our DEI and RBSM efforts. Quite simply, we are confident that Dr. Guskowitz will be a great partner to build accomplishments, work through our challenges, reach goals, and set priorities. My board colleagues and I look forward to working with him to foster a culture of collaboration and earn the Spartan community's trust. Thank you and congratulations, Dr. Guskowitz.
Thank you, trustee Brianna Scott. I'd like to reiterate again my excitement about Dr. Kevin Guskowitz's leadership. In the bright future, we are going to forge together. Like all major universities, we're facing challenges, but we hold high aspirations. With Dr. Guskowitz's academic credentials, administrative experience, and vision for 21st century higher education, we're confident that the university will continue to move forward. And I am going to read the resolution here. It's a summary of personnel action, December 8, 2023. "As Chair of the Presidential Search Committee, and whereas in 2023, the Board of Trustees of Michigan State University commenced the national search for the 22nd president of the university, whereas over 25 open forums and listening sessions were held with university stakeholders to inform the presidential profile and overall search process, and whereas the 29-member search committee was charged with identifying and recommending several highly qualified candidates for the position and succeeded in this charge, and whereas the candidate presented for appointment, Dr. Kevin M. Guskowitz holds the requisite qualifications, characteristics, and skills desired in the next president of Michigan State University, and whereas Dr. Guskowitz's academic leadership has been demonstrated through his current and previous appointments at the University of North Carolina, UNC Chapel Hill, including as chancellor, interim chancellor, dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, founding director of the Matthew Gufford Sports-Related Traumatic Brain Injury Research Center, Chair of the Department of Exercise and Sports Science, and as a keen and distinguished professor of exercise and sports science, and whereas Dr. Guskowitz has exhibited a deep appreciation for the importance of MSU's research endeavors as an Association of American Universities, AAU institution, given both his leadership of a $1.2 billion research enterprise at UNC Chapel Hill and his status as a renowned researcher evidenced through several awards and recognitions, including the prestigious MacArthur Fellowship, and whereas the totality of Dr. Guskowitz's work has an impact that has advanced knowledge and transformed lives beyond a university's boundary, including with the National Collegiate Athletics Association, the NCAA, the National Football League, the NFL, and through initiatives that connected the 100 counties in the state of North Carolina with UNC Chapel Hill, and be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of Michigan State University hereby appoints Dr. Kevin M. Guskowitz as the 22nd president of Michigan State University effective March 4, 2024, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the appointment of Dr. Kevin Guskowitz as a professor in the Department of Kinesiology, College of Education, with tenure, and be it finally resolved that the Chair of the Board of Trustees is authorized to execute such documents and agreements as may be necessary or appropriate to implement this resolution. Trustee Scott, do you support?
I support. I'm sorry, I don't know why I thought you were going to say I move.
Oh, I supposed to say that?
I support wholeheartedly. I apologize. Enthusiastically, yes.
All right, what am I supposed to do here? Comments from the search committee? Tom Izzo, Coach Tom Izzo.
We got to unmute him.
I unmuted myself. I'm getting better at this. But first of all, you know, Teresa, I'd like to thank you for what you've done for us here in this interim stage, and it meant a great deal to me to be selected to serve on the Presidential Search Committee. Being asked to be a part of the group that will help hire Michigan State's next president was this prestigious honor, but more importantly, it was a tremendous responsibility. Related it to my experience as a coach, I've said my teams are only as good as their leaders, and the university can only be as strong as its leadership. From the time I met Kevin Guskowitz, and when he became a candidate to lead Michigan State University, he stood out as a tremendous choice for our next president. The times I've had a chance to speak to him, and to those that know him, one of the biggest things that stood out to me was that he makes relationships that last. He cares very deeply about people. He's known as someone who is a real person, who interacts with faculty, staff, and most importantly, the students on this campus. Relationship building is incredibly important to me as a university president must connect with many different constituencies across campus. Of course, of great importance, he is a passionate fundraiser, as it was well stated. While at North Carolina, he led a campaign that raised more than $5 billion, including more than 215,000 donors who made gifts to support students and the research and scholarship of faculty at the school. Fundraising requires developing trust and relationships, so it's no surprise to me that he was successful in this area. With a background in athletic training, Kevin would move from a career in athletics to journey in higher education, eventually becoming an international scholar and an expert in sports-related concussions. Having come from North Carolina, another world-class public institution, which also has a successful athletic department, he values the role of athletics and helping to advance the university's greater mission. Kevin and his wife Amy have been described as caring and thoughtful leaders who listen to gain better understanding. I think they will be difference-makers and individuals who will embrace Michigan State and bring all Spartans together in a shared goal of making our university the best in the world. And I want to welcome you, Kevin, and thank you, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I went out of order here, is probably why I shouldn't be leading meetings. I apologize to Dean Jolando Jackson. You were supposed to go first.
Thank you. It is with great pleasure and excitement that I stand before you today in support of an important addition to the Michigan State University family. We are honored to welcome Dr. Kevin Guskowitz as the newest member of our community and the newly appointed president of Michigan State University. Dr. Guskowitz brings with him a wealth of experience, scholarly accomplishments, and a proven track record of exemplary leadership. His journey in academia has been nothing but short of remarkable, and we are confident that his vision and expertise will propel Michigan State University to new heights. Dr. Guskowitz's scholarly contributions have been at the forefront of innovation in his field. His research in sports-related concussion has not only garnered national acclaim, but has also had a tangible impact on the industries he has touched. As a respected scholar, his commitment to advancing knowledge aligns seamlessly with Michigan State University's dedication to excellence in research and academic inquiry. Dr. Guskowitz's leadership achievements are truly commendable. Serving as the chancellor of an AAU institution, he has navigated the complexities of higher education with a strategic vision that has led to institutional growth and success. His ability to inspire, innovate, and guide an academic institution through dynamic landscape of modern education is a testament to his exceptional leadership. As you know, leading an AAU large-scale research institution requires the ability to make difficult decisions that not only impact the academic community, but also the broader societal context. Dr. Guskowitz demonstrated prowess in making tough, informed decisions, has not only steered his previous institution through challenges, but has also positioned it for sustained success. We are confident that his decisive leadership will guide Michigan State University with the same clarity and purpose. In his role as chancellor, Dr. Guskowitz has maintained professional and collaborative working relationships with Board of Trustee members. His ability to navigate the intricate dynamics of governance while upholding the values of transparency and integrity reflects a leader who prioritizes the interests of the institution and its stakeholders. As we look to the future of Michigan State University, we believe that Dr. Guskowitz's leadership will foster an environment of innovation, inclusivity, and academic excellence. Dr. Guskowitz, we welcome you to Michigan State University with open hearts and great anticipation. We look forward to the collaborative journey ahead, one that promises growth, achievement, and the continued pursuit of knowledge. Thank you, and let us embark on this exciting new chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolando Jackson, the dean of the number-one college of education in the country. I really appreciate all you're doing here at Michigan State University and all you're doing for our awesome MSU students. I'd like to now go to another member of the Presidential Search Committee, one of our great students, Hannah Jeffrey, president of the Council of Graduate Students. I had the honor to know her, to meet her, when she was on the search committee, learned a lot from her. And Hannah, you're next.
Having me here today, I must say it is an honor, and I will keep my remarks very short because there are so many other speakers that are much more experienced than me, but I am happy to be able to serve on this committee and to give my perspective. So first off, I would like to acknowledge the Board of Trustees for making an effort to build and maintain a very diverse Presidential Search Committee. At all times during the search process, I felt listened to and respected when I gave my opinion. I believe that the MSU Board of Trustees made the best possible decision when selecting Chancellor, sorry, President Guskowitz to be the next president of Michigan State University. When I reviewed his credentials, he stood out to me as a thoughtful, qualified individual with a great attitude towards higher education and leadership. I am very happy to begin working with him to create a great environment for graduate and professional students at Michigan State University. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hannah. That was really nice. Now, I would like to go to another member of our Presidential Search Committee, Mr. Sean Starr. He is a stock handler and president of Ask Me Local 1585. That is one of our great unions here on campus. And I just want to say, I know a lot of union leaders throughout Michigan, and Sean Starr is, no pun intended, one of the stars of our union leaders. Thank you, Sean Starr.
Thank you, Dennis. Good morning. I'm the president of Local 1585. We represent approximately 850 employees across campus. My role on the Presidential Search Committee was to assure that the sports staff and labor unions, you know, had a voice and in the process of helping to hire the new president. It was a privilege to be on the committee. I believe that, you know, Dr. Guskowitz's 28 years at UNC and in higher education have persisted themselves to take on this important role here at this time at MSU, at a time when we need to maintain stable leadership. I believe it's an outstanding hire and a great start moving forward. You know, we have to look at the outpouring at UNC where their attempts to keep them there. They didn't want to lose them, right? So, and I know that I can speak to the other union leaders on campus when we say we all look forward to building a cooperative, collaborative working relationship that was, you know, started by President Woodruff, and we'd like to thank President Woodruff for her support during her tenure. Thank you for your time this morning, and in closing, congratulations. And I look forward to the opportunity to have an introductory conversation and welcome you and your family to Michigan State University.
Thank you very much.
I think I now kick it off to Dr. Stefan Fletcher for a roll call vote, but if I can just make one quick comment before that. Kevin, I just want to say you are going to look so much better in MSU green than Carolina blue. And with that, Stefan Fletcher.
Thank you very much, trustee Dano. We will now move into a roll call vote on the personnel action. Trustee Byram.
Yes.
Trustee Dano.
Definite yes.
Trustee Kanaki Jefferson.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Trustee Kelly.
Hundred percent, yes.
Trustee Pierce.
Honored to say yeah.
Trustee Scott.
So excited to say yes.
Trustee Tbay.
They stole all the adjectives. So, absolutely, yes.
And Chair Vassar.
Yay! Yes! Yay!
Interim President Woodruff, I believe that that is a very solid eight votes in the affirmative. Dr. Guskowitz, congratulations.
Very good. The motion carries. Kevin, I think we could ask you to address the community.
I would enthusiastically like to address the group, and I want to start by thanking the Board of Trustees and the search committee members for your clear dedication to this university and its mission, and for your confidence in me. I intend to fully justify that confidence in the days and years ahead. I want to also thank interim President Woodruff for her enthusiastic and compassionate leadership of the university over the past year, and I'm grateful to her and so many others for the warm welcome to the Spartan community. I'd like to begin by sharing a bit about what brought me to MSU. I've spent my entire professional life in higher education, and I've seen it through the lens of a junior faculty member striving for tenure, a department chair, and a center director, a dean, and a chancellor, and also a proud parent of four children, including three college graduates. What I've taken away from each experience is the transformative power of higher education to prepare the next generation of citizens and leaders, and not only to solve the grand challenges of today, but also to identify and address the grand challenges of tomorrow. This is something that MSU does very well, and I've learned that in my, over the past several months. And I greatly admire the vital role that Michigan State University plays in the lives of those who call Michigan home and so many others through exceptional educational opportunities, research, and engagement across the state and the world. I'm especially inspired by Spartans' commitment to advancing the success of students. I often say that my favorite place on a college campus is in the classroom with students in front of that classroom, and I have tremendous respect for the outstanding faculty and staff at MSU, supporting them on their journey to reach their full potential. I also appreciate MSU's rich history of research discoveries and innovation, serving the common good. I'm a researcher myself, as has been stated, and I really appreciate all the wonderful comments that several of you have made about my career. I'm a neuroscientist by training, and I am proud to have made contributions to advance my own field work that has influenced concussion guidelines in both the NCAA and the NFL. As chancellor, I have maintained my research portfolio to always remind myself that research and scholarship work hand-in-hand with cutting-edge teaching and learning. And I look forward to upholding Michigan State University's important role and fundamental responsibility as a global public research university focused on giving back to the residents of Michigan and the world. As MSU's next president, I pledge to build on the university's storied legacy of academic and research excellence through a culture of collaboration and servant leadership. And in holding faculty appointments in both a College of Arts and Sciences and a School of Medicine here for the past 25-plus years, I have been part of building a culture of collaboration that I believe is unique and has prepared me to work across disciplines and departments, and that I will make certain will happen at Michigan State University. For example, I helped to develop Carolina's Institute for Convergent Science to bring researchers from across disciplines together to address our grand challenges. And I want to be clear that the hu- And I want to be clear that the humanities, the arts, and social sciences are vital to help us understand how people interface with the outcomes of our research. And I call that synergy unleashed, and that's an approach that we've been successful with here, and I know that we can be at Michigan State as well. It's an approach that brings together the arts, humanities, and the sciences. I was encouraged by the emphasis placed on interdisciplinary initiatives in MSU's 2030 strategic plan, and we need to prepare our students to view the world through different lenses to identify the most pressing challenges, process all the inputs of our diverse connected world, and exercise informed critical reasoning to support our democracy. And so, for that reason, I also believe fervently in the integration of the arts and humanities into educational programs and campus culture. And I'm very pleased to see that MSU feels the same, as reflected in the new arts MSU framework. For similar reasons, an inclusive culture is critical to the success of any great research university aspiring to be exceptional. A diverse community is imperative to attracting and retaining the best students, faculty, and staff. And that's why, as Chancellor, I led a reimagining of our Office of Diversity and Inclusion and held community-building forums to identify priorities and the programming and services to address them. And why, before that as Dean, as has already been mentioned, I formed the first-ever Faculty Diversity Advisory Committee at UNC to help with recruitment and retention of underrepresented faculty. And so I was pleased to see how MSU's work, developing strategic plans for DEI and for relationship violence and sexual misconduct, form valuable foundations for this university's 2030 strategic plan. As the strategic plan emphasizes, a university's greatest asset is its people, and nurturing our people must be at the heart of what we do as an institution. And as a servant leader, I will work tirelessly to support the aspirations of all Spartans and help create a culture where everyone feels safe, welcome, and valued. Let me conclude by saying I am aware that Michigan State University has faced more than its share of challenges in recent years. Yet I see a strong university with an inspiring historical foundation that can reach new levels of excellence through its powerful commitment to student success, knowledge, discovery, and land-grant service. And I look forward to working with all community members and partners, the Board of Trustees, and our colleges, students, faculty, staff, coaches, Spartan families and alums, academic governance and labor unions, local, state, and federal officials, and our many other stakeholders. So I commit to working alongside all of you to identify what I like to call a true north. That will lead us to provide the very best education and workplace culture for Spartans and bold service to the public. So as we embark on this collective journey, I invite you to join me in charting the way forward by considering the following questions. What will it take for Michigan State University to maintain its position among the top-tier research institutions in the nation? How will it contribute to the great scientific, medical, and social challenges of our time? And how will MSU continue to prepare students for careers and jobs that don't yet exist? Answers to these questions will help determine Michigan State University's true north. And I will start my tenure with a listening and learning tour to hear from the community about how to ensure a bright future for our university. So thank you again for this wonderful opportunity. I can't wait to begin working alongside all Spartans as we strive to motivate excellence, inspire innovation, and serve as a welcoming community for all. Go Green!
Go White!
Go White!
Go White!
On behalf of MSU and her students, employees, alums, and supporters, we welcome you, President Guskowitz and your family, to our storied university. Were we not in Zoom, you would have a standing ovation from our Spartan community right now, so you'll just have to imagine that. But we do look forward to marching forth with you upon your arrival next semester. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Bar.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the meeting is adjourned.